Thank you everybody. We had closed session and there's no action to report that occurred during closed session. And we will now start our open session with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'd like to invite my wife, Mary, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Where do you have your mic? Right here.
Right there is good.
Right there. Right there now at the heart to salute the greatest plan ever. Do you begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. Just as a reminder, we've got a few reports to give, then we'll have a quick recess, and then public comment will be after the recess. So we will start with Board President's report. And I'd like to show you a little quick video. And then I'm going to turn it over to Diana Hill, who's going to tell us a little bit about her experience at the high school yesterday. So let's go ahead and show the video. All right. So that was a new event that happened at the high school. And Diana was there, so I'm going to turn it over to her to tell us a little bit about her experience.
Thank you, Dr. Barki. It was, I love the high school campus. I have two students that went there. And every time I go back, I get inspired. And so when I had the opportunity to go to this event, because one of the counselors, Mrs. Heron, told me that it was happening and invited me. And what I'll say is, is that, you know, high school students, how many of you have high school students out there? Okay? Remember, you had those sweet little children and they loved you to pieces. And then they go to high school and they get really quiet and they don't smile and they don't say much most of the time, right? Especially, I had boys, especially if you had boys. And it's amazing what happens when you look somebody in the eye. And there, our jazz band was playing. And on other side of the campus, we had a bunch of teachers and administrators as well. With, when they came in, when you come in with balloons and people that have positive messages and that are looking you straight in the face and smiling at you and saying good morning, you know that somebody cares when you do that. And I believe that our, our staff, I believe that the people that we have within our district feel that way. And that it's our job and our responsibility to let our students know that. And so it was really fun to sit there and to help get some of those students that it was Monday morning, it was the last place they wanted to be. But when you look at them and you smile at them and you tell them that you care, they come alive. And the things that ASB and our counseling staff to put this, did, to put this on and put this together, and with the real enthusiasm that came from their heart, you could absolutely tell that. So I was, it was a great way to start a Monday morning. So I was very privileged to be there and thank you very much, Dr. Barki.
Thank you very much. Now our student board report, Angelica.
Good evening, President Barki, esteemed board members, Dr. Crop, community, and cabinet. Welcome to my third board report of the year. So a while ago, we had back-to-school night and it was really exciting. ASB worked it. And it was actually, my favorite part was seeing all the parents experience how it was to run across campus with us. And it was nice to see. We also had our first pep rally where ASB, song, cheer, and football all came out to represent the football game that was happening, I think, that night. And it was really exciting. It was also a traveling pep rally, our first one, because freshmen, little known fact, are too scared to come behind the PAC. So we traveled and brought the pep rally to them, which I think they enjoyed. So that was really fun. We also had our football games. I think football is four to one right now, so they're obviously winning because we're Los Alamos. And we had a patriotic-themed football game, which was really fun. And we honored our first responders and veterans. We also had a Tesoro game, which we won, and it was their homecoming. And the Los Alamos, which our student, student section, people came and they riled everybody up, which is really fun, probably why we won. And then we had our volleyball games, which are very, very exciting. So I recommend coming to every single one because every one that I go to, I lose my voice. I'm just screaming the entire time because that's how exciting they were. You can see we won 31 to 29, which was one of the most exciting volleyball games I've ever been to. So yeah, we're winning. We also had club rush last week, Thursday and Friday. And a bunch of students from freshman year to senior year got to go and see a bunch of clubs that highlighted their interest and it was really fun. My favorite was the Danny DeVito Club. Yes, that was a club.
That's a thing.
I already talked about the Tesoro football game, which we won. We wore blue and it was their homecoming, but we won, of course. And the haunted homecoming is coming up and we're doing preparations for that. And I have the video, the reveal video for it. Thank you.
Very nice. Thank you very much. And on to our superintendent's report, Dr. Crop.
I actually have a question.
Oh sure, of course.
Okay. Could you please explain what the traveling pep rally was a little bit more?
Sure. It's fun. The traveling pep rally, so we have pep rallies behind the PAC. Yeah, big building. And usually freshmen and sophomores eat lunch, like, in front of the PAC.
Oh, on the other side.
Yes, on the other side. And sometimes they're a little scared to come behind the PAC because, yes, intimidated.
Intimidated.
And so ASB took the pep rally in front of the PAC so that we can include everybody.
Thank you. Thank you for the explanation. That was a really great idea.
Thank you.
Dr. Crop.
Thank you, Board President, Dr. Barki, and members of the board and mostly our community. So I know we just had this presentation at 4:30, but many people who are here haven't heard it. So this is a little bit briefer version, but really equally important. So if you'll indulge, I want to at least be able to say it again. I also did recognize some of the families that I have met with as a group and I thank them for being here. They also contributed to many of these ideas, as did many of the speakers from our 4:30 when they speak. So all of it was really helpful and just a big thank you to all of them. So, so as you know, when this first started, the first thing, it really wasn't the first thing I did. In fact, I think somebody from Cabinet sent it to me like two days ago, actually. And then it started me thinking about, we say all the right things, right? So we have a vision and we have a mission. And some of the things that I always really prided myself on, those are there, but they didn't really cut to the heart of the issue. And so throughout this, different things have come to light. So we say here that we want an encouraging environment where everyone demonstrates academic excellence. We say here in our vision that they will model the core values of respect, honesty, integrity, compassion, and personal responsibility, which are essential to positive human relations. And that's meant to extend to everyone, the cooperative efforts of the board, administration, teachers, students, support staff, families, and community. And what really has become crystal clear, and we heard at 4:30, is that this isn't true for all of our families. So it becomes increasingly important that we pay attention to what's not true and do better. So another thing we always say is that 100%, we're, we're big about that, right? So we want to say 100% of our students will be proficient, connected to school. And I think that speaks to equity and access, but still something was really missing. So we talked about no continuation high school, that we were going to try to serve all kids at one comprehensive high school. And I know the last year of CSTs, we were number seven for closing the achievement gap. So we were really proud of that effort. And I know for the Advanced Placement Honor Roll, we were able to increase access and passing rates. So I think though what happened is that I had this false sense, I don't really, I'll say "I" because I'm speaking, I'll just own what I'm saying. But I think there were many of us that really thought that we were really being fair and doing great work for all of our kids. And while we might be doing some great work for all of our kids, we've heard, as you've heard at 4:30, that we've missed it for some. We also, I love the work that the high school did on Monday, but that's just one example. Our schools do have various groups that are working hard and doing, teachers and support staff and administrators working hard to try to build really quality programs for our kids. And so that's a smattering of some. And, and I like them. What's new this year is the McGaw Culture Club, the sixth grade summit, and the middle schools cares program. So again, I had this sense that I would have honestly guessed that a far fewer number of students would have come forward and spoke to me personally, and parents, and mothers, and fathers than what's happened. So it's crystal clear that we still have work to do. And I really just want to make sure everyone captures, nothing is more important than all students and families feeling valued, safe, welcome, included, and supported in our schools and throughout our community. And I think if we miss that mark, we have failed them. And as a superintendent, I feel like we failed the entire organization. That's that important. And I do appreciate the commitment that you've already given to move forward in doing some, some work. We also need to work to bridge, together to bridge the gap that divides us. So when I, there was the initial post and I received hundreds of emails and phone calls and I met with all of them. And I'm not saying that to, like, oh, good for you. I think that does come with the job. But what happened in those meetings is that it does change a person and it changed, it changed me for things that I have a greater sense of urgency. I would like to think I always valued these, but, and I'd like to think that we would have created a human relations task force, but we didn't. That's the bottom line. We didn't. And so, while I didn't like how this originated and the post and how upset so many people were, the meeting Monday night even at McGaw, what I know for sure is that we have to use that as a catalyst to do better. And so it has raised my resolve, my commitment, and certainly my perception of, of things that have happened. And I certainly knew some of them. I don't, I did not know the totality. So some of the things, people now are screenshotting me every day and, you know, calling me. And it's, I appreciate it, it's helping us grow forward. But really, it started from a post, but the truth is, it's evolved much bigger than that. So that's an issue that's serious, but so is everything else I've heard. So inappropriate posts on social media, incidents of racism, incidents of ignorance, personal stories of hardship or racism or ignorance or something along those lines, the divisiveness in our community, people calling each other names and arguing on social media, people calling me to defend somebody's rights, somebody's calling me to, to do something different. And so I think it was equally important to talk to everyone to, to try to be what our district is about, that we repudiate forms of racism and bigotry, but what, what does that look like? So if we say all the right things, it's clear that our mission and vision isn't, what, what came forward to us were examples where we aren't aligned, right? As a larger organization. I also know that we have 1,600 employees, over 1,000 are permanent employees with us. And there's no way that we've done what we could be doing for education for them and support for them in these areas that are rough. And I said, I think it's not on this slide, but I said earlier in talking to the staff, so I did have only one that I think was really important in the way it should have done, and it was this week. And so as I told you earlier, we did cancel the other staff meeting. Because when I went to the high school and it was short and just a presentation, it was really, I, I don't think, they felt any better and I felt sort of sick. Like this isn't something that can happen with just a presentation. We have to have that dialogue back and forth. So then we went to the second school and it, it took a couple hours, but the conversation was rich and people really learned and there were some tears. And I haven't met anyone that doesn't have a passionate desire to join in this work of what we can do better. And so I, I feel also inspired by that reaction and not necessarily surprised. I also heard about stereotypical generalizations and I, I just have to move past those. So I know a lot of families email me those too. But I think it's important for us to, to work hard at not getting sidetracked and move forward with what we know and what our families and students have told us. And so we have the ability to use this as a catalyst for change. And I really believe this with every, every ounce of my being as an opportunity to create lasting positive outcomes for the entire school and district community. I went a little fast on a slide earlier, but I don't want to discount that. I'll go quickly back. We have schools and teachers and staff really doing some exciting work, like Start With Hello, Buddy Benches Bucket Filling Program. So I don't want, and the new ones, but I don't want to minimize that. I want to just say, it's not enough. And so what occurred to me are, are a few things I'll get to here at the end. So those were brought forward. I believe we have the ability. And we also, we are known for our excellence in the forays, but we need to be known for that, for a safe, welcoming, and inclusive culture that values diversity, equity, oops, sorry, and access. So I broke that down. When we're looking at the diversity of our students, and we have this every year, if you look up there, it gives you a sense. So we have almost 10,000 students pre-through school adult transition program. Over half of our students are not Caucasian. We have about 1,500 that qualify that are socio-economically disadvantaged. And you can see the list up there. All of those groups are important, right? So with any student, even if it's one, and it's not, we've heard from 4:30 and I've heard many, whether it's one, 10, 100, or 1,000, it's one too many. So when any student doesn't feel safe or feels disenfranchised, we have work to do. So what's next? So I don't have these answers. I have a commitment to, to move this forward. So one of them that we are going to do is, I had a couple families come and tell me, and we go to school hungry. And we do, we did start a breakfast program at LAE this year, but we are going to have that breakfast, breakfast program at all of our schools before the end of the year. We also are going to, we are also going to create a human relations task force with experts and diverse representatives from school sites and stakeholder groups. And the danger of putting this slide up is that I don't want it to be this prescriptive. I think it's vitally important that that task force really to help define what their subgroups are going to be and what the work is going to do. But it's very important that we address what we've heard head-on. And we are well-known for academic success. People move here, over 90% for our schools, but that isn't enough. We need everyone to also move here because it's an amazing place to grow up and that's for each and every kid. So then I looked at, what are some things that have become really clear? So when we, and these are not in priority order, but when we suspend a student for alcohol, they can have the option of, instead of suspension, that they can get education. And yet for issues of racism or bigotry or calling a name or any of those things, they get suspended. We don't have an education and we don't have an education that's required for the bystander. Another thing we don't have is we don't have policies, regulations, and guidelines with any teeth about social media. So we've been told by our attorneys that we can't have them, but we do believe that we could do more and this group of diverse stakeholders can put together guidelines that we believe. And I also know of companies in the private sector that do have those in management positions or administrators. They are able, so how are they able to? So we need to do that work where they do sign some thing that, that holds them to a different standard and more clear. And, and all the staff that I've had the chance to meet with in the last three weeks, individually and in smaller groups or one school staff where it was really a conversation, nobody resists this. Like, everyone believes that we can and will do better and need to do better. One of those three or all three. We need to provide professional development. So, so many have come to me and I'm really grateful. Many of the people in the room today have sent them to me. I obviously haven't read them all or looked at them. I have some experience from the past and some work I've done with schools I've worked at. So with an entire staff with the Anti-Defamation League and the Orange County Human Relations Commission. But that's just two. There are many other organizations as well. And I've received a lot. So I have them, I'm collecting and, and it's going to be time to take action on getting that together soon. I just really need to have these conversations with our staffs first. And then we also, programs, meaning curriculum too, do we have them? And does the task force see things we could do better and differently that demonstrate we value diversity, equity, and access? So what I appreciated were the people that were, they did show the courage and had these conversations with our parents and our students and came forward and said it, but how would I know you value that? And so while it's heartbreaking for me personally and professionally, that's not good enough either. And so the action has to be what comes forward. And then we also need parent education nights. And I would like to see something larger than that, where we bring diverse people together to give input on this and be heard and communicate. Because I think what, what I've seen happen in the last three weeks is when people listen with a pure heart to really understand and learn, you can be changed. And so the last Monday, somebody said this, you know, entered the meeting and, this ridiculous, can't believe you're doing this. And I said, could, could you just listen and stay here and help us all? Like, just try to hear what people say. And at the end he said, I'm, I'm changed. I think differently. And that was only after three hours meeting. Now I know that's just a sentence, but I believe in the power of education and I think people can change who they are. And then also to be determined, those are just ideas. I think it will be up to the task force. And so what are some things we can do right now? We can just take personal responsibility right now. Like acknowledge that bias exists, challenge ourselves to confront our own biased beliefs and assumptions. And what I've added in my own conversation is, ask people to let you know if you've offended them and then take action on that. And so I've had a few do that since I've been trying that. And so it does work. I have invited people and I think it has been helpful. Monitor our own social media accounts, words, and actions. Remember, everything we say, do, and write has an impact. Listen, learn, and demonstrate respect, empathy, and compassion. And I'll take a pause there. I know that in our, in our country, in our county, in our community, there's a lot of polarization right now. And it feels, I feel a lot of tension and I know a lot of us do. And, but I think that we have the opportunity to show that something truly extraordinary can happen, even when people come together with diverse opinions, that we can reach a better understanding. And I also think it's not a popular vote, right? So when I'm getting all these phone calls, I'm not taking a vote. Well, most parents think this, so we're going to do it. This isn't about that. This is about just a, a pure truth about what we believe. If we believe in 100%, it's not about what most people think. It's about what the right thing is. And we need every kid to feel safe, valued, and included. And then we need to keep the focus on the, all students, model the behavior we want to see from others, and make our actions demonstrate our beliefs and our commitment. So I'm going to end with this. I know that this is a lot shorter than earlier, but clearly if there's any other questions or something you'd like me to reiterate again. But when I think about Los Al, I do love it. And I know that a lot of families have come forward, meeting with me, who's, who, along with the outrage, are also share and heartbreak. You know, my kids are going here, they're thriving, we love our school. How is this happening to us? And I've met with one staff with the longest conversation, it's like, help us, make this go away. And the hardest part for me to say was that I can't make this go away. Like, you have to be in it with me and we have to work on this and we have to be able to hear what people say. And then we have to bring that, doesn't mean you're horrible or that you're racist, but what it does mean is that some people are not having good experiences in our schools and we have to make that better. So I think it's been all over the place of learning and valuing. But I do believe in high-quality, safe, welcoming, and inclusive public education that values diversity, equity, and access is the promise of a better America and a better future for all of us. And I don't know anyone, I don't know anyone, that entered this work not believing in that and wanting to make a difference. So I believe it's our job to get everyone together to help us solve it. And then I'll say about our logo, we wrote Lead The Difference. And at the time, I did have a couple incidences of people that have come to me and Cabinet members and principals and administrators. But we really do want it as a call to action. And this, I'll never say I'm glad that the post happened or that this has happened, but I do believe the day comes where we say, you know, that's the best thing in hindsight that really did a great thing for our district. So that's what I'm counting on and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Crop. Any questions or comments from the board? Questions?
I just wanted to, I don't know how I can form this into a question because I know there's a horrible sense of urgency to get this work done and to get forward because we're all appalled at this, that this, that these things are occurring within our, our district. But I guess what I want to say is, is that we also have to go about this job, this whole plan thoughtfully, with a lot of input. And I've been on the board for a while and I do not believe in adopting or doing something necessarily really quickly so you can say you did it. But, so as much as I want this, I want the task force after this meeting and then 12 minutes on the next morning and we'll start it on Thursday. I know it's not going to happen. So I guess what I'm saying is, is that we're going to be, all be frustrated for a bit because we need to do this thoughtfully and well. And we need to hear from everyone and that takes time.
If I could say, thank you. And I'll say, I have had to step out of my box a little bit because I also, and I thank you for the support, we talked about it earlier. I can't wait till we have it all dialed in or until the task force. So we'll be talking about this with nothing for 10 years. Because it's, it's going to have to be a work in progress. And I'll have to take a risk about, did I say it the right way? Did people hear it? Maybe it didn't go well, but then that's the next thing and we can go down that line. And I, for, for all of us, I know at the district office have had the most conversation, there's just nothing more important and we have to take this risk and be thoughtful.
So in my business, we use something called Agile. And so being agile means that we don't wait until we have something completely plotted out. We, we have a thoughtful process and we put that process into place and then we constantly refine whatever that process is we're doing. And so I think that as a district, we want to do the same thing. And we want to, we want to address this, address it head-on, and, but be agile with that process and work through that process. One recommendation I want to make is that maybe if people are interested in the room in wanting to be on that task force, you could fill out a piece of paper and give it to us. It would be a great starting point. I know, I would also ask that if you have the opportunity to jot down on there when the best time to meet is. Because I know I've been part of many of our committees and our task force and that's, it's a struggle sometimes, right? Because we have a lot of working parents and we have children. and we have childcare issues, and we have a lot of these things. And we want to be able to have as much input as we can. And maybe that, you know, means we have to get a little flexible with things. So I would like to make that suggestion, and I know it's off the cuff, we don't have anything created to do that, but I think there's pieces of paper out there. So if you would do that, that would give us a really great starting point of knowing who the, I think, everybody cares in this community. But obviously, you're really committed and passionate because you're here. And we really appreciate that. And so, I think that might be a good starting point. So, Dr. Crop, thank you once again for your presentation, and I hope we are agile with our process and going forward.
Thank you, Diana. Karen, any comments? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Crop. Normally, we take a recess, but often, we have school presentations, and Hero of the Heart Awards, et cetera, and we take a recess to take pictures, and enjoy some cookies, and meet the folks that just came and presented. Since we didn't have that, unless there's an objection, I would suggest that we skip the recess and move right into public comments. Is that okay with you, Dr. Crop?
Yes.
Okay, good. So, if you want to participate in public comments, please fill out one of these cards, and you can give it to Tina. Public comments are limited to three minutes. And I would respectfully request that you keep your comments civil and respectful, and to model the tone, et cetera, that we would want from all of us. Thank you.
And we do have children in the audience.
And I think, Dr. Barkey, like we did before, we do have a policy where we limit the amount of time, a lot of times with our public comment. And so, I think that this is a really important thing, and I suggest that we don't limit the amount of time.
No, the amount of, each person gets three minutes, but we will go until everybody's been heard.
The policy says I have to know our book, but we're not identified by that.
And we're going to start with Dwight Radcliffe.
For those of you who were here at 4:30, I apologize for my repetitive speech here, but I was uncertain of the 4:30, 6:30 split, and how that works out. Let me speak as a parent in Los Alamos. I am gravely concerned about the plight of students of color in our district. As a resident of the area for almost 10 years, my family and I moved to the area and experienced firsthand the infamous stereotypical orange curtain on numerous occasions. I'm concerned that our district, while excelling in academics, and athletics, activities, and the arts, I'm concerned that we are failing in humanity and basic civility. Students of color increasingly do not feel supported or protected by their teachers, staff, or administration. We seem to be incubating this hostility through silence and a posture of ignoring the repeated reports of student concerns. Although, the recent events have brought it to the forefront, there is no, I don't think there's anyone here that can in good conscience try to assert, or affirm, or try to state that these are all brand-new incidents. These incidents that students have been talking about have been going on for a number of years. And it's gotten to the point where non-white, non-able-bodied, sometimes, non-heterosexual students feel powerless and helpless on our campuses. Further, as long as programs, and training, and representation continue to look monochromatic, just simply black and white, and they are conducted by the majority culture, it is impossible for us to expect any true diversity or sensitivity to take place. And I think that it's a rather sad commentary that, as parents and community members, that we've assembled here to simply plead that our students would feel safe and welcome in the schools that they attend. Thank you.
Sticks and stones may break my bones, but words can never hurt me. How about, that's a straight-out lie. Words can do so much more than hurt you. They can diminish you, break you, deflate you, stagnate you, and in some cases, rob you temporarily, or sometimes indefinitely of wholeness and healthy living, because your spirit has been crushed so far beyond repair. Yes, that's what words can do. Racism and discrimination in this district is not new. My children's accounts range from elementary, middle school, and high school. I stand before you as a mother who has so many times had to try to put my daughters back together again. A few real examples are when your child comes home and tells you things like, "They've been referred to as a nigger," again, with a hard R, several times, and she's in the company of non-black students, saying negative things to them in reference to the color of their skin, like, "Why are your legs so dirty, or brown?" During a lesson in history, a white student slid a picture and pointed out people were being lynched, and asked if that was her family member. Being also told, at a different time, that the Emancipation Proclamation should be hanging on her bedroom wall. My oldest daughter spoke about a white student dressing for Halloween in a black t-shirt, black pants, a black beanie, and gold chains on. When asked what the student was dressed as, she said, "I'm black, you know, a thug." My child was told during one of the heights of police brutality against black people, that police brutality wasn't even real. When we take the position, just as Kaepernick does, because it's absolutely real to us as a culture. One of her classmates tried to attack her on social media because she was speaking about her experience, and she was told that racism did not exist in Orange County. How about trying to talk your child through the ongoing feeling of being singled out by a teacher when she wasn't doing anything different from anyone else? Or when a teacher loudly announces she must stand during the flag salute, when she's chosen to sit silently and protest. It's a choice. It's her right. And she's articulated why she wanted to sit, and her parents agreed she could sit. Racism is alive and well in Los Alamos School District, and it has a pulse. If a person in a position of a leadership is allowed to just continue business as usual after posting something so openly racist as what happened a few weeks ago, it's just a continued reality of the people of privilege stepping on our necks and taking a piss on people of color with absolutely no, or extremely little regard for us as a people. Our children should all feel safe, no matter what their background. No child should have to endure the types of treatment that my children has, and other children, or parents, who you will hear from coming up later. Thank you.
I'm a junior at Los Alamos High School, and I can say with complete confidence that in the 10 years I've been here, I've never once felt represented, or like I have a place. There is no place for students of color to feel represented. We are powerless and voiceless in this district. The incidents that occur are treated as though they rarely happen, and there is silence to protect the aggressor. They are rarely given a consequence that will stick or make a difference, and the victims of these situations are forced to sit by and watch it, and deal with it. I'm here to stress the importance of representation. We feel unsafe because time after time, we let out issues to be known, only for nothing to happen. We sit here in front of you, and we voice our problems and concerns to make this area a better place. Weeks and months pass, and no changes are made. My first year in this district, I was asked by another student why my legs were so dark. During my middle school years, I was asked if I was related to the slaves in our history books, and if I enjoyed picking cotton. I was also called the N-word, and had a box of tissue thrown at my head in class. The teacher saw, and the only consequence was for the student to write me an apology letter. I was also yelled at and hit on the head by a teacher my freshman year for having a calculator out, because she thought it was a phone. I believe that for us to be better, the people in power have to stop acting like they're listening, and take action. It is not enough to nod your head at me and forget about the issue when I take my seat. When people take action, problems are solved.
Hi, I'm Lyric Greenhill Casados, and I'm a junior at Los Alamos High School. I have been in this school district since 6th grade, and I have not experienced personally any racial incidents, but I've heard of multiple incidents that my friends have had, who did not speak up, because they felt as if they had little power. However, I'm speaking up now to explain how in the first week of my junior year, a student addressed me with the words, "Hey, nigger." When this happened, I was not only shocked, but afraid to go back to Los Alamos, due to the small population of black students compared to the large population of white students. It is sad that in the year, it is sad that the word "nigger" and racism still exist in this year of 2018. With that being said, our tiny population of black students should feel greater, if not equal, amount of safety as any other race at the schools in this district. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sikola Elliott. I work at Oak Middle School. I know how it feels to walk into a very white world every single day, which was really strange to me when I first started working there. I'm gone on three years. However, my experience hasn't been like some of the experiences I've heard. My kids have had a good experience at Oak, I have two at Oak, and I have had a good experience being there, outside of just feeling weird about being maybe the only black African-American staff. This whole situation is sad. It's totally sad. And I was mad for like, two days. And then I decided who I want to be, who I want to show up as, because I can't show up in a white world mad every day. My kids are doing well, they're not affected, but we aren't represented, in a lot of ways. But I do feel like, I'm also in the mix of things that are going on at Oak, and there are a lot of things that are going on, where we are, we do have diversity on our campus, and we are doing programs to work with our students. And I just want to say that we can't forget the middle. I think the world is forcing us left or right, and we're forgetting the middle, and empathy is in the middle. And we have to learn how to talk to each other. I had a conversation with almost everybody at work, just because it's just, it's just the things to talk about now. And of course, I'm having a conversation with white women, white men. And I had one with a friend that I talk to every day. We laugh together, we cry together. And when I brought, I said, "Hey, did you hear about what happened?" And she said, and she had very strong words about Colin Kaepernick. So I got kind of quiet, gave her her space, and I told her how I felt as a black woman. So for me, I said, "You get to tell your kids to go to school and have a nice day." I tell my kids to go to school, have a nice day, but I also have to teach them how not to get shot. So you don't share in that vision as a black person. And she told me, "I never saw it that way." So, I wasn't trying to change what she believed, but her saying to me, "I never saw it that way," was enough. Because there's a middle. There's empathy. There's just that little space where, hmm, people think about it. And with this experience, I've found that people just don't know, like, Sikola, oh my God, I don't see it that way. And I have to respect their position. And I also think we have to work together. I don't come to work mad, because I don't want to be reactive. I want to be part of the solution. That's it. I just want to be part of the solution.
Good evening. I'm Janine Ball. I teach at the high school. And this is to the board. One of our greatest challenges as teachers is to make every student feel safe and included. Since the horrific displays of racism and murder in Charlottesville, Virginia, members of our campus, led by Dr. Brandon Martinez, formally organized trainings and outreach to improve inclusion for our students and staff. That work continues through dedicated staff, even though Dr. Martinez was dismissed. In the last year, public demonstrations of intolerance became news in our community. The Los Alamos City Council took measures against immigrants. One of our students was physically forced to stand during the Pledge of Allegiance. And a principal declared that a law-abiding African-American "to be a thug," which literally means a violent criminal. As a district, we have a pervasive undercurrent of exclusion. We tried to tell you this six months ago. Everybody that was in that room six months ago could have predicted this night, we just didn't know when it was going to come. But that was a huge part of why we stood before you then. Under what circumstances is it okay for our students to use the N-word? Why would a gay individual be disallowed from speaking on our campus about their significant position in government? Why are certain students or staff members of our minority populations selected to represent the district in photos or videos? We have a long history of selectively including or excluding minorities as they serve dubious purposes. We believe it's time to strongly denounce the dual standard, sorry, that has long been evident in our community. Dismissing a principal who actively worked to include all students and staff, while ignoring clear racial rhetoric from another is unacceptable. Isn't it time that our leadership take an active role to support every student and staff member at all times? Thank you.
Hi. I moved to this community in 2006 because of the schools. If I had to make the same choice today, I wouldn't. I don't want my kids to grow up thinking that racism is okay. And this didn't start from a post. This has been going on. And I hold this board and this administration accountable. And please don't say it started with a post one more time.
My name is Mary Ann Escalante Nasser, and I went to Rush Elementary School, Oak Junior High, and Los Alamos High School, and St. Hedwig's for one year. I was born here. And I apologize for anyone that has experienced racism. I am half-Mexican, and I have not experienced any racism in this community. But what I have experienced is political. I feel like the political party divide is absurd, and it starts in the classroom. And I feel like if you do not believe the political beliefs of the professor, that you could be punished. I think it puts a lid on certain students' opinions in papers. I've had my own son tell me he wanted to write about a certain subject, but was afraid, because they knew the political party in which the teacher stood for. And I think a classroom should be a place where people have free ideas. And I want to commend Mr. Thompson from McAuliffe, because my son did not know what political party he was, and he was able to express his views, and everybody felt very comfortable. I do not feel that way in the high school. And I know the election was a big blow to a lot of people. And you know what? No matter who wins the presidency, I always have great respect for the President of the United States, and I think we should instill that in our children. I believe in the Pledge of Allegiance and the flag. And when I found out an AP photography teacher sat down after the election and would not give the Pledge of Allegiance, I was appalled. I didn't do anything about it, because I just didn't. I didn't do anything about it because I just didn't. I was probably stunned. But then when I heard the AP, AP World teacher wrote a post on November 23rd, 2017, where there was no backlash, nobody said anything, including me, because it is free speech, although this is a teacher who I would not want to teach my child. It states, "By Jessica Rieger, I'm thankful for all the people I've met this year. It has been profound struggle, but all the people I've started to know and work with in this resistance has given me new meaning and drive in life. I am also thankful for my students. I said it last year and I'll say it again. They gave me hope when I needed it most. Without them and being a teacher, I'd be lost. Lastly, I'm thankful for my freedoms and ability to say [bleep] Trump, [bleep] Pence, and [bleep] them all." You know what? That's what was written in a Facebook post. So I'm just saying there's a double standard. And when Dr. Ronnie, or Ms., I'm sorry, Ms. Ronnie Ellis put her post in, where was the outrage when this post went out, which I think is far more offensive? They're both offensive and they should have no business being in public atmosphere.
So I just want to say, if I could, for the rest of the speakers, so since we do have young people, I'm really urging, really we'll just have to stop. You cannot use that language, please, because I think you can say your same message without doing that. And that, I understand, but I really want to make it clear. And so it's not appropriate and we are an education organization and there's young people here and it's not even appropriate if there weren't. So please make sure that we use the right language and if it's a quote, you can do it in another way without saying the word.
Tricia Ridgway?
Hi. Actually hello from, taking it from the
Counselors at the high school.
Thank you. And I agree with that completely, sending positive messages. But we're here today to talk about something that's very disturbing. What really is disheartening to me is that we're allowing what's happening nationwide to infiltrate into our small community. I think we'd all agree that name-calling is not an effective way to express our disagreements. However, the word that was created, this conflict, has no racial meaning whatsoever to the majority of the population. A word that came from an article as one person, their personal opinion, in an article that thug was a racist term. Seriously, is our community going to let one person dictate a new definition for a word? If that's the case, we really need to ask ourselves, is it reasonable? It's disappointing that so many people choose to focus on the negative, the negativity, and enjoy seeing another human being suffer, just because they have a different opinion. It saddens me that Ms. Ellis has endured horrific personal attack over this. Yet there are other teachers at the high school that can go on political rants, preaching their political, personal agendas, and teachers that can post profanities on Facebook and receive no backlash. This is not about taking sides. It's about equality. It's about freedom of speech. And what about the teachers that fragrantly broke their contract by protesting on the school grounds? I find the F-word repeatedly used in one person's Facebook page extremely offensive. However, it's her opinion and it's her right, just that it is Ms. Ellis's opinion and right to use the word thug. What happened to freedom of speech? It seems that freedom of speech is only free if you agree. How can our children become critical thinkers if we continue to teach them that one side of an opinion is wrong or offensive? How can they learn to have stimulating conversations if we don't allow them to express their differences? How do we teach them tolerance if we don't respect opposite opinions? As a parent, it's our goal to raise our children as independent thinkers and to be, not to be followers, to be accepting and tolerant. We should be ashamed of the example that we're setting. Our behavior is not teaching tolerance, it's doing the opposite. We are demonstrating to our youth that tolerance and freedom of speech doesn't exist unless you agree with it. Let's stop this diversity and work together to create positive change. Let's focus our time and energy on keeping our campuses safe. Let's agree to disagree. Let's truly embrace tolerance and celebrate our differences. Let's have productive debates. Let's show our patriotism for our great country without fear. In closing, I hope that you don't cave under public pressure and I hope that you embrace the support, or support our First Amendment. I hope you choose not to take any disciplinary measures against Ms. Ellis. However, if you do, I expect those in the district that have made posted profanities and those that protest on school grounds and those that preach their personal agendas in the classroom also be punished. This can't be one-sided. Most of all, I hope that we can truly live and work side by side in harmony.
Danielle Burke?
I attended the previous meeting and they shared that it was more helpful to hear specific issues instead of generalizations. Here are a few of the issues I've experienced in the Los Alamos School District. Being asked why my hair is so puffy, being told that I'm pretty for a black girl, being asked if I knew what a porch monkey was, being humiliated as students turn around and look back at me as we talk about slavery. I remember I was going to play with a girl in third grade and she told me, "I can't play with you because Obama won the election." I remember also witnessing a classmate shout at an African-American kid in a jersey and yell, "High number 42," which is the jersey number assigned to baseball player Jackie Robinson who faced racism. One day in my class, my teacher asked, "Why do we, why do we even have Black History Month? There should be a White History Month. It's just a token holiday for black people." Even this past week, a girl shared how she was going over to her friend's house, but her parents would let her go as long as there was no black or Mexicans there. She then said, and I quote, "But it's fine because they aren't allowed to come to my house either." She then turned to me and said, "Sorry Danielle." In the previous meeting, some members shared that they couldn't imagine what it's like to feel racism. Racism is a bullying that leaves emotional scars that cannot be forgotten. It feels like someone stabbing you in the heart as they smile on your face. I've seen staff members wearing shirts that read "One Team, One Vision" all the time, but it's a blurred vision. In our news saying, "Lead the Difference," we're not, we not only need to lead the difference, but we need to make a difference in how we treat people of different ethnicity.
Elena Anderson?
Hi. My name is Elena Anderson. I know that some of you know me because I have a third-grade daughter at McGaw and I'm there volunteering a lot. Some of you know me because I'm running for school board and some of you know me because I stopped in front of the cameras when they were right there that I had to walk by on the way to take my child to school and say, "Mommy, why are there cameras here?" I thought fast. I didn't tell her very much. She's only eight. I just want to make a note of a couple of things because I know that you've already heard me speak, some of you. In the news, I was quoted as, partially quoted as saying that people were literally wondering what they should send their school, kids to school in the next day, whether it was going to be a statement if they wore Nike, especially this one little boy who, he just likes Nike and that's what he wears and his parents don't think that's bad and he can't, no, he can't all cut up our clothes, even if we were to want to. But the problem is that the teachers wouldn't be judging that student and most of the parents wouldn't be judging that student and most of the teachers. But the problem is that the tone of the district is set at the top and that's here. And when we have a school board member whose candidacies, incumbents are endorsed by the Los Alamos City Council Mayor who, and city council members who are leading the charge of anti-immigration sentiment with our city and to our nation. And when we have a board that has said to families of the LGBTQ community, when they brought books like somebody did for the, for everybody for the district, that, "No, we're not ready for your books." What people are hearing is, "You're not ready for my kid. You're not ready for my LGBTQ kid. You're not ready for my kid who's an immigrant who's crying on the way to school because they're afraid they're going to be arrested or their parent will be arrested on the way back." And it's not, it's not fair to expect students or teachers or parents to not feel worried about this when they're coming to school because the tone is set from the top. Yes, one principal made one post, but people liked it. Nobody was, people are afraid to chime in and say, "Oh no, that's wrong." It took a lot of discussion on the parts of the people who did chime in to say anything about why this is, that this is wrong. And so, one other thing is that it starts with Hello program. I'm glad you guys did it, but it started because of the Sandy Hook Promise people. I've been a member of Moms Man Action in Orange County since we, Against Gun Sense in America, since it started. And Sandy Hook Promise is the organization that put this together. And if you don't know what that is, which you may not, it's a national nonprofit organization based in Newtown, Connecticut. They're led by several family members whose loved ones were killed in the tragic mass shooting at Sandy Hook Elementary School on December 14th, 2012, that claimed the lives of 20 first graders and six educators. It's focused on preventing gun violence and other forms of violence and victimization by bringing people in and by, yes, saying hello. But it rings hollow when you also say to a teacher, "Don't you want to be armed?" And it rings hollow to say that we're inclusive when you're also saying, "But these people who say we actually don't want you to live in this town are supporting us." It's hard to have a different tone when you are being led by that.
Manetha Green Hill Casados?
Hello, again. My name is Manetha, Sacola for short. I'm here on behalf of my daughter Lyric and the other students that feel as though they don't have a voice. Lyric, at the beginning of the school year, was addressed with, "Hey nigger," as she walked to the trash can to dispose of her watermelon seeds. This is something that had never happened to my other two children who did not attend the Los Al. District. They were in Long Beach District. Although this student who was accompanied by four of his friends was clearly in violation of at least five ed codes, including but not limited to obscenity, harassment, bullying, hate violence, yet he was given a two-day suspension. While he gets to walk away and go on with his life, she's stuck with the aftermath of fear, discomfort, and feelings of being unsafe. This brings me to the incident with the principal at McGaw. Might I add that I just recently watched the video, or commercial, and I can't believe that a commercial that is so inspiring, I was actually shocked because I thought I was expecting something else, a commercial that is so inspiring could be responded to with such hate. And I would just like to say that this is a huge opportunity to begin a change for the better. I say this because the outcome, whether positive or negative, will make a huge impact on the culture of this district. It will either give the community permission to continue in the cultural intolerance or let them know that it will not be tolerated. Yes, we have the freedom of speech, but it does not mean that we ignore the rights of others. It should not be at the expense or the safety of others who also have rights. I mentioned that my two older children, I mentioned my two older children earlier. They attended Long Beach Poly where diversity and cult, diversity thrives, but it was not always that way. If they can make the change, I know that it's possible with this district as well. Implementing mandatory diversity training for the staff, having assemblies where speakers, speakers are invited to speak, programs where the students have opportunity to learn about other cultures and/or get a feel of what it's like to walk in the shoes of another. But, and walking in the shoes of another, we have to take our own shoes off first. I think that would be a great start. There is also a need for our children, black, Hispanic, Asian, Indian, whatever the race may be, to, to see the representation in the staff of this district. If there are really not enough applicants of color, I propose recruitment from the local universities as a start to increasing the diversity in the staff. Thank you.
Ungana Ha, Patrick, sorry if I
Ungana Pathic. Thank you for letting me speak again. Earlier I spoke about, and since you've all heard, I'm not going to speak to it again. But I gave three examples of how we can better our district with diversity training, task force, and who could be a part of it. But I'm going to give a personal story. My parents are visiting from Chicago and my daughter just started Kinder at McGaw. And for some reason, I've been having an emotional, really tough time with my daughter at this school. And for the first time, my parents brought her to school this week and I started bawling and my mom asked me why and I said, "For the first time in my life, I'm at school with my parents and I'm not afraid, I'm not afraid of what their names are, what we look like, what we dress like, our culture and our religion. For the first time in 40 years, I feel like we can be who we are. And I'm, I feel safe." And after all this stuff came about with Ms. Ellis, and let's be honest, it's not new, it's been going on for decades. It brought all those memories back. I'm 40 years old. I have a master's degree. I'm a professional. I shouldn't have to feel this way for my children. We need to coexist in a society where everyone can be who they are without feeling that they're not accepted in this community. And when we say people of color, that we want to celebrate our culture and our religion and our holidays, it doesn't mean that we want to take it away from people, people who are not of color. We want us, we want to feel equal in this society. So, you know, I don't, I don't understand, from everything I've heard in the last couple of years and being more involved in this school, why these things don't get addressed. And honestly, I know that you care. We heard your story earlier. But at the end of the day, if you don't start addressing these things, elections are coming up and change will happen inevitably. If not this year, it will happen any time. So I really, really urge you to take us seriously because we care about this community just as much as you do and change needs to happen. And if it doesn't happen with the board as it is now, eventually it will change. Thank you for your time.
Lance Malinowski?
Shot at my level this time. Thank you. Okay. Good evening, Los Alamos Unified School Board members and fellow stakeholders. My name is Lance Malinowski and I've been an RSP and history teacher at the high school for 23 years and hold bachelor's degrees in political science and sociology and a master's degree in US history. I add this detail because I have given a lot of thought to the wonderful opportunities this country offers, its shortcomings, and how it can eventually lead up to its creed. The disturbing trends and incidents of the last few years in our nation as a whole, our political system and civic discourse have prompted me to speak here this evening. We are here this evening due to the efforts of the 19th century reformer Horace Mann. In the words of historian Elwood P. Cubberly, "No one did more than he did to establish in the minds of the American people the conception that education should be universal, non-sectarian, free, and that its aim should be social efficiency, civic virtue, and character rather than the mere learning or the advancement of education ends." Basically, an educated citizenry is vital to the functioning of our democratic republic. Tonight, we're addressing a situation that is emblematic and symptomatic of the increasing dysfunction in our nation's political system and the public's grasp of the complex issues our nations face today. A public education employee has exercised their First Amendment right to free speech in attack to citizen exercising their same free speech rights to protest, to protest his perception of unequal, unjust treatment of minorities by law enforcement agencies throughout the country. He was labeled an unpatriotic thug for doing so. My concern is how this situation relates to the challenges facing our schools and society at large. Our political system and society are increasingly polarized and balkanized as citizens become more tribal and seek out information from sources that confirm their biases rather than lead to the truth and practical solutions to complex, modern problems. While I wholeheartedly support the right to free speech, as educators, we must exercise that right responsibly. A closer examination of the situation might have prevented the situation in the first place. The facts look like this. The quote-unquote defendant accused of lack of patriotism is a young athlete who chose to follow his conscience and protest shortcomings in our law enforcement system that have left led to multiple deaths of minorities while violating their constitutional right to due process of law. He chose to use his public platform and not stand during the National Anthem prior to NFL preseason games in August of 2016. When informed by a fellow player and military veteran, it would be appreciated if he knelt, he gladly obliged, and began to kneel, a deeply reverent stance. That player Nate Boyer's exact words were, "I'm not judging you for standing up for what you believe in, it's your inalienable right. What you are doing takes a lot of courage, and I'd be lying if I said I knew what it was like to walk around in your shoes. I've never had to deal with prejudice because of the color of my skin, and for me to say I can relate to what you've gone through is as ignorant as someone who's never been in combat zone telling me they understand what it's like to go to war." By September 2017, the accuser, a beleaguered politician on the defense from a growing myriad of legal, ethical, and moral woes, tried to attack the athlete as an SOB, and someone who had disrespected the nation's military. The same politician would have been granted five deferments from service during the Vietnam War on bone-spurious medical claims, equated his time dating in New York City during the 70s and avoiding STDs with military tours of duty, mocked American hero John McCain for being captured, and berated the family of a Gold Star recipient who died in the line of duty.
Your, your time is up, so can you, can you wrap it up?
While patriotism and First Amendment rights deserve attention and debate, the thug comment does not. Racist dog whistles have been a hallmark of this nation's current administration's modus operandi, it is imperative they are immediately recognized and discredited. As public educators, this is our task. Every morning, the last words out of our students' mouths before instructions begin are, "With liberty and justice for all." I look forward to hope and anticipation for the school board's thoughtful, meaningful, and appropriate response to help us realize these lofty ideals in these troubled times. Thank you for your time.
Debbie Wilder. Drew Sells.
Hello, my name is Drew Sells, and I love teaching biology at Los Alamos High School. Before I decided to come back to teaching, my wife and I bought a house in this district because of the excellent academic reputation of the Los Alamos schools. We moved here nine years ago in time for our daughter Lail to go to kindergarten with, kindergarten, kindergarten with Mrs. Sowers at Rossmore, and our son James to pre, to preschool with Mrs. Batistone at Lee Elementary. I'm here to talk about a few essential points. One of them is teachable moments. The other would be recognizing who we are as an essential means to improvement. Number one would be teachable moments, the fun stuff. Every teacher loves it when we see students on task and performing well. This is the fun part, the easy part of our job, to acknowledge excellence and tell everyone that, that this is an exceptional way to get this job accomplished. The equally important and infinitely more challenging side of teachable moments takes more courage and care. When someone uses racially charged, bigoted, or sexist language, then it's up to those present, whether they are peers, parents, teachers, teammates, classified staff, administrators, or board members, at that moment to shed a bright light on each and every incident. We need to use the verbalization of hate, use the posting of polarization, polarizing and racially charged speech, use the poor, poor choice to show ignorance in any form as an opportunity to teach acceptance and to teach tolerance. Recognizing who we are, as teachers, we constantly are practicing self-reflection. Did that lesson go the way I had hoped? What could I have done differently? What would the change have meant to some of my new students, or some of my old students, or some of my other students? As a district, we need to get better at self-reflection. From the first day as an employee here, we are taught, this is one big family, the Los, the Los Alamos family. I can tell you, I've experienced much of what is great about this family. I've worked at Oak, I loved it. I have kids that go to Lee, or my kids have gone to Lee, Rossmore, Oak, and now the high school. They love it. I have personally worked at Oak and now the high school, both as a teacher and a coach. I know many of the good sides of this family, and I do love it. However, it is difficult for our family to grow and learn from each other if we don't share our weaknesses with each other, or don't have the courage to condemn hate in any form at that instant. No family member wants to read or be surprised by what they read in the papers about their family's shortcomings. As a golf coach at the high school, I tell all of our teams that the quickest way to get better is to acknowledge your weaknesses and to go to work on them. Find a way to turn your weaknesses into a strength. Practicing what you're good at is always fun, it's easy. However, the real gains come from working on your weaknesses. We need to do that here at Los Alamos. The task I believe we have, so that we cannot, so that we can move forward, is to recognize what we do poorly and proudly shed light on those issues as things we intend to share with our family, and then turn those weaknesses into strengths. Part of this challenge is to resist the temptation to bury each incident and to forget that even the worst events can, can and must be used as teachable moments, as we might have seen earlier tonight. As a parent and teacher, I'm embarrassed and disappointed in the generic response from our school board and administrators. A very teachable moment has been lost, and our community leaders have not stepped up to honor the students with the quality of leadership they deserve. I do appreciate your time.
Leslie Weber.
Thank you, Board and Cabinet, for your time, for listening to us, for this forum. And before I go on with my, whatever it is, I want to applaud our students who have bravely and boldly stood up. You are the reason we're here, you are our inspiration, and you will continue to be, despite what happens and what doesn't happen. Our tagline for this year is Lead the Difference, and I want it to be more than a tagline. And, and kids, you've done that, and you will continue to do that. So much has happened in our district since the start of the school year, and there have been a lot of reminders in terms of why we need to lead the difference. It needs to be more than a tagline. At the high school, I believe that we have led the difference. We shared our concerns about failing and struggling students upon the dissolution of Laurel and the elimination of our remediation courses for our struggling students. Our answer to that was to be able to implement classes with lower class sizes and slower pacing for some of our kids who needed to build not just their academic skills, but more importantly, their confidence as kids. We added extensive discussion and ongoing education about diversity and inclusion at the high school. May not have been well received by all, but I think it was well received by the high school. We do lead the difference in that we meet weekly to discuss our concerns and our solutions that benefit our students and deepen our sense of community on campus. This week's Start with Hello is, is just one of those great examples of teacher, faculty, staff-led, counselor-led programs. We openly share our successes and our missteps with our colleagues in the hopes of improving our practice and benefiting our kids. We will continue to lead the difference, with or without you. We will continue to attend these board meetings so that you know that we're not quiet, passive group of teachers. We'll continue to question the validity of A3G for All, Apex, and concurrent enrollment, and other decisions made at board and cabinet level that directly and often negatively impact our students. We will hopefully continue to be role models for our students, raise the bar for them, provide support for them, and push them forward to the greatness that we know that they are all capable of. We would like to extend the opportunity to the board to lead the difference as well. We want to ask you to come to the high school for more than your 32nd cursory visits into our classroom. We want you there for more than a minute, we want you there for 30 minutes. We want you to hear our, we want, we don't want to hear your rationale for the decisions that you've made, often at the expense of our kids and our profession. We want you to see that we contend, what we contend with, we want you to hear our concerns and hear everything directly from those who committed their professional lives to staying in the classroom. Last week, my juniors and I were reading some of Ben Franklin's writings, and understandably, the kids were not thrilled about his autobiography. But the aphorism that stuck with them and that continues to stick with them seemed to really resonate with them was, "What you would seem to be, be really."
Jessica Rigert.
Hi, my name is Jessica Rigert. I'm a teacher at Los Alamos High School. And just like Leslie, I'm here to formally invite the, the school board members to come to the high school and have a conversation with high school staff, all in compliance with the, in consideration of the Brown Act, of course. I'm extending this invitation on behalf of staff members who desire to have a more dialogue with our school board. It's obvious from events last year and from this evening that there is a disconnect between sites, admin, and the district office. I'm here to extend a potential solution. School board members, please come and talk with us. Los Alamos District over and over expresses desire to be a family. If family have conversations, disagreements, and dialogue, and work together. While board members make visits to sites and teachers attend board meetings, I think that we can all agree that there is no dialogue. These are one-way interactions. Please be clear, while this is an election year, this is not campaigning. This is not an invitation for you to give us a presentation or us to you. We are asking for an open channel of dialogue. It is also worth noting that that high school has extended an invitation to the district office admin to address many of the concerns brought up this evening, and to participate in our high school staff CCEJ training this week. We hope that this will be another opportunity for a conversation and understanding of the hard work we have to do. So, please, come to the high school, have some coffee, maybe some donuts or fruit, and informal conversations. Thank you.
Desmond Belgrave.
I am seeing, I am senior class president at Los Alamos High School. I've only been in this district for four years, and in my time, I have not experienced any major forms of racial discrimination or any major problems, with the exception of a couple incidents. But I can bear witness to many students close to me that have been the victim to too many issues that the district, in this district, I'm regarding race. My problem isn't with the people who commit these racial issues, but rather with the district, the parents, and the people in power who continue to allow this, these ignorant actions to continue without having probable cause, to put a stop to this, and stop treating this situation like it's not a big deal, because it is. Because these parents and board members are not the ones being called a nigger. They're not the students that are frightened to return to school every day because of harassment. They're not the parents that had a hard decision to decide where to put their kids in school because we have, we as a community have such a strong background of racism. So, don't treat this issue like you have experienced it because you haven't. The fact that there is a known history in this city of racial issues and that there is no, there has not been a solution is just plain and unacceptable, and there needs to be appropriate action taken as soon as possible. Bottom line is that there's been racial, racial issues in this district for way too long, and it needs to change as soon as possible. Thank you.
Marlaus Davidson.
I'm Marlaus Davidson. I taught in the district for 25 years. My kids grew up here, they're Los Alamos Griffins. I, I never intended to speak tonight, and I first of all want to apologize for the lat, the inability, my inability to deal with issues and the consequences of not doing something through my years of teaching. I think that, that we all, as educators, have been left in a position of recognizing things but not knowing where to take them, and we put Band-Aids on wounds, on very deep wounds, and, and I, I regret that. But I think it isn't just that teachers didn't care, or cared and didn't know what to do with it, I think the administrators above them didn't know what to do with it. If we would take something to them, where would it go? In this, in our community, we want everything to look really beautiful. And because we want it to look beautiful, it's hard to acknowledge the wounds. So, for, for the 25 years that I taught, I was part of the group out of Griffins with a mission, and Griffins with a mission came out of students feeling empowered after they, they came to school and found anti-Semitic literature stuffed in their lockers in the dark, dark of night. And these students rose up and created Griffins with a mission to say, this is not who we are. Well, those are the students we need, and somehow we're writing a different message on the minds of our kids today, because we, they shouldn't feel comfortable with the words they're choosing that are causing such pain. And I should be, as an educator, should know what to do and where to go, and know that I'm going to get support from, from people above me. So, I think what I'm here to ask for is that Task Force seems like such a teeny tiny thing. It seems so impossible to deal with this situation with such a teeny tiny thing. So, you're going to have to reach out to these people who have spoken, to this community who has spoken, to people in the community who are hurting, and, and not be the Task Force. I've been on so many Task Forces that when I'd come to sit down, it would be like a class reunion, because it was the same people again. We need people, we need people who are experience it, experiencing it, we need the people who brought these books and did the educating for it. We need the people who know where to go with this. And for all the years that I worked with Griffins with a mission at the middle school level, we were always teaching tolerance, and that word hurts. I mean, what tolerance, excuse me, I'm sorry, tolerance is putting up with somebody. I think we need to get to the point where we celebrate our differences, celebrate our uniqueness, and that our children learn to know that we are also much better off because we bring something different to the plate. So, I'm really hoping that with this Task Force, we look at, first of all, top-down education, and then a clear path when things happen on campus, and, and, and for, for administrators to be able to take these issues to the district and not feel like it's going to make, reflect poorly on their leadership on a campus, that we care about these kids, and we, and we come together, and we pick people on, on the committee that are diverse, who come from all different perspectives, and will bring a new voice, and that's, that's what I hope. I don't want to see me or somebody who's been on every committee, I want it to be a diverse group. Thank you.
Eddie Cordomarch.
Good evening, my name is Eddie Cordomarch. I'm a teacher and a coach at the high school. First, I want to start off in, to my colleagues, the AP World History teacher, Jessica Rigert, and the AP Photo teacher, Janine Ball. You do great work in the classroom, and I'm proud to be your colleague. I, I studied government in college, I, I try and teach it daily to seniors, and I'm well aware of the importance of freedom of speech, both, both for language that is popular and language that is unpopular. But racially insensitive, coded language, such as the use of the word thug to describe an African-American, has no place in education. When these incidences rise up, we should be the first to denounce them. We should be the first to say this is wrong. We should be the first to say this doesn't represent us. Yet, in multiple emails and in conversations, I have yet to hear the district denounce or condemn the use of the term thug. Thug is, thug is code. It's, it was purposely used, and it's unacceptable to refer to a peaceful African-American as a thug, as a violent criminal, because what is violent or criminal about Colin Kaepernick? It seems really obvious that the district should have made that very clear and said something to the effect, or promoted something to the effect of, although we do support freedom of speech, the use of the word thug to describe a peaceful African-American does not reflect the views of the district. It concerns me that that statement has not been directly communicated to staff, students, and to the community. Right is right, and wrong is wrong, and when this type, when this type of language is not condemned, it is passively and silently condoned. I would hope our district represents a higher set of morals than what has been directly communicated. than what has been directly communicated to the stakeholders over the past few weeks because the quality of words matter and the absence of words matter as well. Thank you for your time.
Stephanie Tellis.
Good evening. I have to say thank you, Eddie. Class of 01 Griffins. You make me proud to know you. I want to start out by saying that changing the board meeting time from 4:30 to 6:30 without sufficient notice to this community gives the perception you want to silence people's voices. There are many working families who could not be here for the 4:30 session and many thought that everything started at 6:30. I was informed Thursday morning via text that all of a sudden, there was a 6:30 meeting that now had a dialogue session at 4:30. So, that, again, please remember, perception matters. I have a unique perspective. As I moved to Los Al when Oak Middle School reopened and graduated from Los Al High, as a 12-year-old who moved from Virginia, I was shocked at the amount of racism I faced at school here. I come from the South. I will never forget seeing swastickers etched on a lunch table at lunch or my eighth-grade history teacher who hung up the Confederate flag because a student brought it in as part of his history and the look on my parents' face when they walked in at Open House to see it displayed for all. At that age, I didn't understand just how much that disturbed my parents, but as I've grown up, I truly understand why. I was blessed to have parents that could talk that I could talk to and who encouraged me to move forward and excel in spite of everything and I became an educator. Now, as a mother of two children who go to school in this district and a former teacher at McGaw Elementary School, I'm here today. I've had some new experiences since then. When my youngest was in kinder three years ago, we had several complaints from his longtime substitute teacher that he was too loud and speaking out frequently. So naturally, as a fellow educator, I told her, I will be sitting in the classroom tomorrow to see firsthand what he was doing. I sat and I took data every time my son spoke out versus his peers. And to my surprise, he wasn't speaking out more than his peers. He was just trying to be heard above the rest of the kindergarteners in his class because he's the only boy in our family and he's the baby. And in order to be heard, you have to speak up. But did that teacher ask me, why was he speaking up? Did she notice the other children who were doing the exact same thing? But more importantly, did she understand they were five and they were in kindergarten? It's what you do. When I talked to her, I must give her credit that she was listening that she listened and never again did we get a complaint. Now, I can't say for sure that my son's teacher was picking on him because he didn't look like the rest of his class. But again, perception matters. Now, I noticed a few years ago that rarely did I hear my children talk about stories from school about people of color other than Black History Month. And it was always MLK. When I asked the elementary and middle school principals what they were doing last year about their plans in regards to celebrating Black History Month, I was met with nothing. But if you have some ideas, we welcome them. Now, I appreciate the willingness to involve parents, but I had had I not asked, would have even crossed their minds. As time has passed since then, I see a lack of culturally-inclusive curriculum being used across all grade levels. I look forward to working with the district and the leaders here to make all students feel included. I have come here as a community member that applauds your efforts so far. What I'm asking for is there to be transparency and that we, as a community, expect to be told how members are selected for this task force and what they're doing and to be given ongoing updates. Thank you.
Dr. Barki.
Just for clarification, all our board meetings start at 6:30 and almost every board meeting starts off with a workshop. It starts anywhere from four, sometimes five o'clock. So, that's our standard protocol. So, that was no different than our meeting today. Barbara Farrell.
So, I'll try not to be redundant because I was here at 4:30 and I was the first one to speak. But everyone should know that a group of families that were afraid to individually confront their principal asked us to put together and put together a petition to ask that the school leaders lead by example and bring civility and kindness and inclusion and diversity into their schools for their children. And I dropped off the petition with 2,600 and more than 2,600 signatures. And if you look at it and I flip through it, tremendous amount of people just locally have signed it. In five days, it was over 2,000. So, it's real and it's now. And this task force, there are people in this room or who have been in this room. One of them is Stephanie Tellis. The other one is Kathery Yay. These are educators. Monica Eve Glickin, who is an immigration specialist. Not everybody who goes to the school here is an American. Not every person who goes to school in the colleges are American. We're diverse. We have immigrant families. They may be working on their status, but they're at your schools. So, there are different things. I was shocked at one of the hearings and, you know, professor, I'm sorry, Dr. Cupp heard this, is that we had a principal who didn't know how to handle a transgender child in the limited way of even going to the bathroom. We had a principal who didn't realize that other holidays, religious holidays, were excused by state law. How can this be? This is ignorance and it has to be corrected. There are lots of even free things that they can go to very soon. And I know it's hard to set that up. The task force is not something down the pike. The task force has to start, get a core group together now and evaluate if you need to expand it. And you have the names of a number of people. I think Kathery even gave you more names. So, and these are people who live in the community. They know our community. We're not here to tear up the community or tear up anybody's lives. We're trying to bring people together. There's too much division in this country. I don't agree with my brothers. That's okay. I love them. I'll always love them. I don't look like everybody, you know? I was too tall. So, if you go to all-white school, you're too tall, you're too short, your hair is curly, whatever. You have to love your brothers and sisters. They all look the same in God's eyes.
Jaclyn Fowler. Jaclyn Fowler, did she leave?
No, she's here.
Good afternoon, board members in the community. I didn't write you a long speech, so I'm just gonna say what's on my mind. I appreciate for the next two minutes that everybody really listen to what I gotta say. And because I see some of them board members writing notes, just listen to me, okay? So, I came to y'all district maybe about two, a year and a half ago because they sent me here from Italy. So, when I first got here, when I first got here, I know what racism is because I'm from the South. California, y'all ain't got nothing on racism. You have nothing. And not just to say that bluntly. You don't know what it is to be racism. I wear this uniform, 1% of the population, just to try to make a difference, just to say that I can make a difference so I don't have to be a bystander. I speak for all of us. But I got two little girls at McGaw and my baby came home week, couple weeks in and says, mommy, why ain't my skin like theirs? You don't know what it did to me. And she said, straight in my hair, so my hair can look like theirs too. She said, the teacher in first grade, second grade, take me out from school and put me into a special program so I can be around people that look like me. I bled for this country. I would die for this country. But what y'all up there doing doesn't make no sense. Because when we got here, the first grade teacher stated to me that we need to hold her back because she's not at the reading level that McGaw has. I said, she just been here a couple of months. You can't tell that if you haven't assessed her. I said, assess her and bring me paperwork so I can see what you're grading her on. They let her go to the second grade. I told the second grade teacher the same thing. I requested to have her retained in the second grade because you did nothing. You didn't assess her. You didn't do any intervention. You did some interventions that only made her worse. She came home saying that she was called stupid when she had to read out loud and that her teacher did nothing about it, second grader. Then she went on, then I contacted her teacher. I said, where's the IEP that you're talking about? Because I see other kids that of a different race that are getting these programs and my daughter haven't even been assessed. January of this year, I told my husband, I said, we need to take her out of school. They're doing nothing about it. I can send her home. I can sit her at home and we can try to find another program. So, I found another program that we have to pay additional $300 a month, $300 a month, so she'll have more tutoring. And then, so she only sees this lady once, once a week for our hour. They had did more than your program did in a year and a half. Her read, she said that her reading level will not be up to state certified until next year because they tested her. Y'all did nothing. And I'm appalled that you sit on that board and you act like you listen and you act like you care when you truly do not.
Sojima Montes.
Good evening, everyone. I stand up here. I have three children in this district. I stand up here to represent my daughter who sits on this board. I am proud. I live here in Los Alamos. I've been here for 10 years. I put my two youngest from kindergarten. One's in fifth grade. The other one is currently in seventh grade and a senior in high school. I personally have not experienced any racism here, but that's me personally. My daughter, on the other hand, wrote a speech about her experiences in school and what it was like for her. That speech broke me. It hurt to not even know that my daughter went to school and felt this way. A lot of us talk about equality and tolerance and hearing how, you know, we all have our own opinions, right? This is the United States of America. We're supposed to have our own opinions. That's what that's what we're built on, right? Is having our own opinions. But it's interesting how so many of us get crucified for those opinions. I empower my daughter every day in everything she does. I teach her right from wrong, but I also let her know there is a gray, right? There is a gray. It's not just A and B. When she told me, Mom, I'm not really happy with our political climate. I don't like this. I don't want to go to school tomorrow because I'm afraid because of my views. I empowered her to go to school. If you have those views, those are your views and don't let anyone take them away from you. Empower others who may have different views and have a conversation because that's what you're supposed to do. I feel that we don't do this very often, not only in this community, but in our world around us. I work as a social worker. So, you want to talk about seeing things that are unequal in our community and around the site. I see it every day, okay? The trauma, the abuse that my daughter has endured because of her curly hair, her brown skin, the fact that she is a Latina who doesn't speak Spanish, it saddens me. But it also empowers me to know that my daughter is not only, and this is me bragging 100%, my daughter is not only the girl state for Los Alamos. She sits on that board. She is one of the presidents of Guam. She is on ASB. She speaks her mind. She wants to go into political science. She's an amazing child. And that has been brought, sorry, one minute, second left, that has been brought by not only an amazing education here at Los Alamos that she has gained, but also by her strength and her resiliency in knowing that her voice matters. Thank you.
Kathery.
Hello, everyone. I was part of the 4:30 group that wasn't sure when we're supposed to speak. I am a parent here. I'm also, as people stated, an educator. I've been working with Los Al on any capacity possible for the last, I would say, decade. I want to start off first by saying thank you. Thank you for allowing us to tell stories. Stories are really powerful. Every one of us, we only see things through our own set of eyes, right? We can't see it through others. But when we listen to each other's stories, we're able to feel and hear and touch a little bit of what it's like for others. But I also want us to acknowledge what it was like being here because it's what it's like for our children. Our children doesn't have a choice where they're in in the classroom. They have to go from period to period when they're in middle school and high school and they're there. And for many of them, their voices are not heard. I also want to acknowledge that sometimes when people are talking, many of us felt really uncomfortable. I also want to acknowledge, I purposely sat in the back to watch the group. And as some people spoke, some people purposely sighed loudly and shook their heads. I share this is because there's a lot of work we need to do as a community. Yes, we should have differences, but we should be tolerant. We should understand that our perspectives are only our own. And the only way we can provide a community of love and trust and excellence is by hearing more of each other's stories. So, remember I said that as a community, within the last two weeks, our community donated $800, $800 of books that I noticed is still in the front. I share that because we bought 50 books by the community looking for books that represent our community. Because there was a parent with a child that's a trans youth and she did not speak out because it takes power to speak out. She's scared to speak out. So, there's privilege that comes with talking and with sharing, that a lot of the voices that's heard here, there's more that don't feel comfortable in sharing. It's because what's seen in our school, what we read and who we read about is what we, our children, consider power. So, many children across race, class, gender, and with different family orientations, never see themselves in the books. And by doing that, we are saying that their stories don't matter. So, I know, Mr. Barki, you had shared that you will look at these books later on. I want to let you know, I'm the organizer for our state and local ethnic studies summit. We have an ethnic studies bill that has passed. These books are all nationally acclaimed, award winners. Please go beyond looking at them because we spent $800 on them. Please do not put them in a district shelf where they are not used or stuffed in the library. There's books that talk about how do you have courageous conversations about race in ways that are productive? How do we engage in conversations where we're uncomfortable? How do we put Black Lives Matter as center? The book that I bought that I just shared with you guys earlier, it's sold out. Black Lives Matter for teacher educators was sold out because in Seattle, they bought that book for every single teacher in the whole city. So, I gave you my copy. So, please don't just look at it. We really work very hard to think about how to do this work because we know we need to work as a community. I know you love our kids. Loving our kids means empowering them so that they can sit right there. Loving our kids means empowering them so that they can sit right there because that young woman right there next to Dr. Crop is my inspiration. I hope my child feels that she has voice in the classroom so she can sit there just like you. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank Patrick?
I'll claim seniority above and beyond anyone here. I retired in 213 after 47 years serving this district. So I'm an old guy. So I'd like to comment what's happening because there was a recent article by Ms. Paterno and it was an opinion section. I don't know if anyone saw it in the USA Today. And she talked about the culture of Orange County and our education system and very specific charges about Los Alamos and the district. And I thought about my experience in Orange County. When I came here, you know, I graduated from college when I was 21 and I started teaching in Long Beach, actually. I was the, I think I was the youngest high school teacher in California at that time. Somebody told me that anyway. But immediately I ran into some problems. When I taught in Anaheim, which Los Al was part of at that time, they had a sex education program. And the John Birch Society was, as part of the group, a right wing group who went after teachers and went after programs. And I got involved in that so much that after school board meetings, they followed me home, my car. Another thing, I was elected president of the union then and I wrote a letter to everyone in the district and I suggested that we needed people of color in the, in the teaching profession, especially in Orange County, it was monochromatic. The results was, I got some interesting letters back. I wrote a satirical piece from a guy who was a PhD, a black man from Harvard with university. He had a sum, he graduated summa cum laude. He applied for a job in the district. It was the Anaheim district at that time. And he was refused because he wasn't a good fit. I think I've heard that on other occasions. I wrote this thing and this letter and it was satirical. I was giving him a notice that we, you know, that we wouldn't regard his, they wouldn't regard his application. It was interesting. I got letters back supporting me. I got a few people who took the letter, figured, they took it literally and patted me on the back saying, you're right, he hasn't fit. And the most interesting thing was a death threat. And it was real. It was palpable. And so that's the Orange County that I kind of grew up with. I was very pleased to come to Los Alamos. I taught at Western before then where I spent most of my career. And the things I'm hearing don't represent, certainly don't represent the children and the community that I felt when I was there. Although there were signs of, I think it was 2009, the superintendent at that time, people weren't here, when Obama was going to give his speech to students. They, he didn't, he sent out directives saying teachers were not to allow the students to listen to the president's speech. Could you believe that? You know? Last but least, I wanted to come here as a teacher and that's the decision of the court in its decision involving the salute of the flag in West Virginia versus Barnett, right in the middle of World War II. The United States Supreme Court ruled the following. The court ruled, if there's any thick star in our constitutional constellation, it is that no official, high or petty, any prescribe, can prescribe what shall be orthodox in politics, nationalism, religion, or other matters of opinion or force citizens to confess by word or act their faith therein. In other words, you can't even legislate around this according to court. You couldn't legislate these rights away, okay? You cannot demand anyone's law to be tested, to be tested by a rule by the district. There was a court, there was a case preceded this by where Jehovah Witnesses refused to salute the flag and they were, it was considered insubordination. This case was an appeal on that. So that's something to keep in mind. We ought to know what the law says. And if you want to abide the constitution, that is, you cannot, you cannot condemn anybody. You can condemn them if you wish, but you're in violation of the constitutional law, okay? So what I would suggest is maybe we could use this as a teaching, I'm a teacher, as a teaching moment. And I think what the district and the teachers and this community should try to do is get together. And my suggestion is, when I was a teacher and it annoyed a lot of people and it made it uncomfortable, I think, for some administrators, is that is to make education real. You know, you've got to make these, these questions real. You've got to get in the community and deal with these problems. You can't, you can't have this going on and somebody, and no one does this, talk about Chester Arthur's run for the presidency.
Sir, your time is up, so if you could wrap it up.
It doesn't make sense. So what I would suggest, I'd like to see the community. I'd like to see teachers and I'd see the people work together. And damn it, get educated, you know? Read the law. We cover this case in government. I don't know what happened.
Thank you. Fatima Grimes?
Bonjour. Je m'appelle Fatima Grimes. I learned that in kindergarten at Jackie Robinson Academy, where I attended a duly emergent school that taught French, Spanish, and Japanese. Attending such a well-rounded school centered on cultural diversity made me a more well-rounded individual. The city of Long Beach is the 10th most diverse city in America as of 2017. Since Long Beach are our next door neighbors, maybe Los Al could, could meet with board members from the Los, from the Long Beach Unified School District Board to find out ways, to find out ways on how they keep all their students equally blended, loved, and appreciated. My children, who now attend McGaw, which is a predominantly white school, don't get the experience I got. They will never know what a peace feast or cultural diversity week is or have experience in participating in plays and lessons regarding black history, Mexican history, Asian inclusive history in a school. They are being forced to learn these lessons in the world. My children, I feel like, are not getting the full experience and exposure that they should be getting in a school. As a young black woman, I am constantly looking for ways to integrate my children. I shouldn't have to do that. I shouldn't have to find a way to make my children feel included. They should feel included at all times. I personally would like to be a leader in this task force and a community enrichment leader when the process gets started in Los Al. I ask for all of you to think about me. As a young black woman, I am forced with a huge economic disadvantage. When I struggle, my kids struggle. If school doesn't provide anything, it should always provide education, care, food, love, and compassion. When I told my child's school principal at McGaw, Ronnie Ellis, that I was homeless and had nowhere to feed my children breakfast, I was told that that was my job as a mother and I needed to figure it out without any compassion. I appreciate that you heard my cry because it was real. I appreciate you implementing a breakfast program into all schools because of my transparency. Now I know at all times that my children will get at least two meals a day. I am asking and continuing all that regardless of how everyone feels about racism and politics. Personally, I ask that the teachers, admin principals, and all higher up positions act in love. You are here because you love children. As a district that takes pride in patriotism, where God is stated in the foundation of the Pledge of Allegiance, the Bible says, "Above all, love each other deeply because love covers over a multitude of sins." John 15:12. Racism should be a sin if it isn't, but with love, we could fix that. Thank you.
Thank you. Last one, Eric Ward. I don't know if he's still here.
All right, I think that's all the public comments. And I don't know about you, but I need a potty break. And the next part of our meeting is consent agenda and a few action items. And you are welcome to stick around. But why don't we take a two-minute break so we can use the restroom? And if you guys want to stay or leave, now would be a good time.
Thank you all for coming. I was one of the.
All right, we'll assume Dr. Crop's going to wander in here shortly, so we'll get going. We have, next up on the agenda is our consent items. And I understand we do have a poll.
We do.
G. So I will move for consent items A through F and H through, looks like double I?
No.
Double L?
Double L.
I'll second.
Any discussion about those items? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously four zero. And now I will move approval of consent item G.
I'll second.
Diana Hill?
Thank you. I pulled item G because it's the approval of an overnight extended field trip by Los Alamos High School Model United Nations students. And we approve a lot of field trips. We approve a lot of different things for our students. I particularly pulled this one in light of the things that have been going on and been going on in our community and just to talk about some of the things that we do to help our students be able to connect, to give our students the opportunity to have discussion and talk about issues that are not only in their local schools, but also within the country and within the world. And so I'm very proud that these students are going to be traveling to New York to compete in this conference and hopefully they have the opportunity to come back and share some of that with us and see. I'm sure they'll do wonderful, but I'd also like to hear what their topics were and what the discussions were. So there are a lot of different clubs. I know this week was also, I think, this week or last week was Club Week on campus at the high school. And it gave students an opportunity to be able to join a variety of different things. And so whatever their ideas or passions may be, they need to find a sponsor and then they can start a club. And so if they've got something that they're excited about or that they want to make a statement about, I think that's a great place for them to start. So that's why I pulled this item. Thank you, Dr. Barki.
Thank you very much. So we had a motion and a second, and Ms. Cattulli?
I just have a really brief comment because we have people in the audience who don't attend regularly. Our consent items are considered ordinary and usual of nature. When board members, we get our, the agenda sent to us electronically. We look over them, read them in details. And if we have any questions, we submit them and those questions are then answered. So these are reviewed and they are thought about by the board. It's just that they're considered normal and ordinary of nature. So we put them all together and move them as one.
Thank you for that clarification, Mrs. Cattulli. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously four zero. Onto our action items. Action item A is approval of revised board meeting schedule. I move approval of that.
Second.
And discussion, I just want to point out, the reason why this is on our calendar here for an action item is that we had scheduled a meeting during spring break. And so we are canceling the meeting, which is April 23rd during spring break, and moving it instead to April 9th.
Thank you, Dr. Barki.
Yes, ma'am. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously four zero. Next is approval of textbooks. Mrs. Reed?
Thank you, President Barki. Tonight, we're bringing forth three textbooks for approval. Master American Sign Language, Finger Spelling, Numbers, and Glossing. Master American Sign Language Level One and Signing Naturally. All three books have been on preview in ed services for the past 30 days and we're really excited they're going to be being implemented and used in our three levels of American Sign Language, which most people probably don't know is a program that typically falls under ROP. But we are so thrilled that we have such an interest in that that we're able to hire our own teacher on to provide that level of career technical education, also now seen as a foreign language on campus at Los Alamos High School.
Very good. So by literacy court, will students get that if they take sign language?
Yes, they will.
Excellent.
Mrs. Reed, I, I should know this. Has sign language been accepted as a foreign language equivalent for UCs?
It has. It now meets A through G requirements as well as foreign language entrance requirements for Cal States and the University of California system.
Thank you.
So I'll move approval of these, oh, we don't need a motion, do we? Just informational?
No, these are approved.
Ah, got it.
These are approved.
So I'll move approval of these textbooks?
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Cattulli, have you read these books?
No, I haven't. I don't read the textbooks all the way through. I read the supplemental readers' novels.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously four zero. Next is approval of warrants. The warrants are the district's checkbook and the checks that are written since the last board meeting. They're sent to us for our review and we often ask questions for clarification and then we approve the warrants. So I will move approval of the warrants.
Second.
Any discussion of the warrants?
Eighty pages.
Eighty pages, right.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously four zero. Next is acceptance of donations. We live in a very generous community with parents and community members that support our district. And scrolling on the screen now are the donations that have come in since the last board meeting. And then on the final scroll will be the totals since the last board meeting. And let's see when we get to that. We've got to thank you.
What's the total?
There it is. Excellent. So we are very blessed to have such generous community members and parents. And I will move approval of the donations.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously four zero. Next is classified personnel and certificated personnel report. Dr. Pulver?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's team members of the board. Tonight, we recommend approval of both classified and certificated personnel report. Would like to call your attention, one other item at the base of the classified personnel report is an updated classified subsalaried schedule. The minimum wage is changing starting January 1st. And so we want to update that to reflect the current changes to the minimum wage and a few other subrates.
Very good. I'll move approval of the classified and certificated personnel report.
I'll second.
Any discussion or further comment? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously four zero. And now on to communication. Mrs. Russell?
Okay, I was gone most between the last board meeting. I was in Israel and Jordan and that was a very arduous but enjoyable trip. But I came back and I had a whole bunch of errands to do, obviously, things left over to do. So one day, I decided to treat myself to Fortune Cookie for lunch. So I go in and there's this huge bus, I mean, it was packed for Fortune Cookie, usually is, but I mean, it was really packed. And I'm going, wow. So I'm sitting there waiting and pretty soon, all these people start walking out. I realize they were the students from our adult transition class. They were having lunch at Fortune Cookie and the bus was out there ready to meet them and everything. And I thought, what a unique experience, you know? All go to lunch together at a, you know, fairly nice restaurant and have a good time. They were all very well behaved, by the way, doing their job. Then I was also fortunate that my jet lag wasn't too bad and I went to the state of the district and I thought it was magnificent. Dr. Crop did an excellent job about telling about how wonderful job our district is doing in terms of many, many things. So thank you for that. And we had a huge attendance. I mean, it was just absolutely packed. I mean, you could hardly move. And, you know, people from the Los Al, just from their community as well as Seal Beach and Rossmore and all the various government agencies. So, and the police and, you know, military. So thanks to all the people turned out. Thanks for thinking of us.
Mrs. Cattulli.
It's been a while since our last board meeting. I was able to attend our community meeting at McGaw, which I thought was informative, enlightening, and important, and I thank Dr. Crop for holding it, because I think it was important for our community. I also went to the back-to-school night at La Salle High School, and one of the ways they traditionally do the back-to-school night at La Salle High School is we get snippets of performances from the different performing groups, dance, and choir, and orchestra, and drama, and they had drum line this time, and I just love drum lines. And I just thought they did a fantastic job. I was also able to attend the La Salle Chamber Breakfast. I went to our most recent ROP meeting, and we are also in an ROP, we started going through all our audits and financials and making sure everything is okay. And the one thing that I'm really happy to announce is that ROP has been deficit spending. We have a very percentage-wise, large reserve, and we are no longer deficit spending. So, we got our ducks in a line. It took a while, but we did it. And the state of the district, like Mrs. Russell brought up, was really a very wonderful morning to attend that. And at the, Dr. Crop included the heroes of the heart, which are individuals from all the site and district-wide that we acknowledge for what they have done for our schools, and we included them, and they got to be recognized. And I just thought that was a really nice touch, because these people give so much of themselves, and it's just like picture time, but I think it was just nice that we took the extra time to have them there. I also attended the Leisure World Expo, because we have, keep saying about how we need to connect the leisure world with our school district more, and most of the people that came by when I was there kind of looked at me like, what are you doing here? And I kept saying, "Great schools make great communities," and they would agree with me. So, I think it was a good first step, and I'm hoping that we'll go back there next year. We actually had a meeting with the city of Seal Beach. We do this about every two to three months, discuss any mutual issues or problems, and the agendas are usually pretty short, but it is a really good working body, because we try to not have fires to put out, and we try to have each organization keep the other organization aware of what's going to be happening, and what activities could impact, and how we can help one another. I also attended our PTA council meeting on Monday this past weekend. I was in Sacramento, because I'm on the Board of Directors of the California School Boards Association, but I think I have really been spending most of my time attending volleyball at the girls' high school. And if my granddaughter hears about this, I know I'm going to get a text from her saying, "Grammy." But she's on JV, and it is an absolute joy to watch one of your kids, whether it's your grandkid or your kid, to be participating in an activity at that level. So, go Lady Griffins.
For, I forgot, so--
I'm done.
Oh, Dr. Barki.
Sure, go ahead.
Oh, I went to our monthly Sälpa meeting, which is our special ed consortium that we share resources throughout six districts. And we always honor an employee of the year every year. And so, this year, we had chosen to honor our business manager, Kathy Thomason. Some of you may know her herself. She lives in, actually lives in Seal Beach. And she's just a marvelous, marvelous person, does so many things with the Sälpa above and beyond what her job description is. And so, she was so surprised, because Dr. Levine went out, and her whole family came, and a bunch of the Sälpa staff came and honored her. So, it was very exciting. She was, you know, really surprised, so I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. Mrs. Hill.
Thank you, Dr. Barki. I was at the high school a couple of times. One was for back-to-school night. I had the opportunity to be there at the beginning. I had another engagement, but I was, I love how many parents come out. When you look in the, look in the audience, you know, you would think you just see freshman parents, and you see a lot of freshman parents, but you see just a lot of parents. And it just shows what our community, how connected they are, and how important it is for them to understand what their children are doing and where they're going to school. And that just makes all the difference in the world. And then, also, as I said earlier, on Monday, I was, was start with hello, and that was, that was, that was a lot of fun. So, I also was, at last meeting, we, the last meeting, I do believe, we had a moment of silence for one of our teachers and coaches, Eric Bowman, who passed, and I had the opportunity with my husband to go to his funeral, and Dr. Stone spoke, and he did an amazing job. And for this gentleman who always didn't go to La Salle, but grew up right next door, and that was the only place he wanted to teach and coach, was La Salle. And he did, and he got to do it for his career. And if anybody still wants the opportunity, there's still, there is a GoFundMe page for his family to help out with them and help out with medical expenses. And so, I would recommend that you take a look at that. On September 11th, I went down to McGaw and went to their flag ceremony, and it is a, they had a speaker come that was a first responder and had lost a great deal of his crew on September 11th. And to be in the presence of somebody like that who speaks such truth and had been through so much, it was humbling. We had, I had the chance to actually meet with the executive committee of our union and for about 45 minutes, and fielded some questions from them, and I think we had a good dialogue, and I think they got some, a little bit better understanding of the way, some of the ways the board works and some of the things that we do. And so, I appreciated having that opportunity. I was also down at the McGaw meeting that we had for parents down there, and I just want to give a shout out to Dr. Crop. Three and a half hours, she fielded questions. It was a, there were a lot of diverse opinions and things being said in that room, and you handled it with the utmost grace, and I appreciate you doing that. I think that's an incredible opportunity for people to be heard and for people to start to heal. Thank you very much. And I went to, sorry, I've been kind of busy. I am, I am, we all have committees and that we are, that we sit on as board members, and I sit on the PTA Special Ed Committee. And so, Dr. Olsham did an amazing job about talking about what we're doing and the resources that there are for parents, and these parents are so, all parents are concerned about their kids, but these are parents that know that they have, they have to work a little bit harder, and they have to know what resources there are for their students, and make sure that their students are connected, as we all feel. But one thing that I took away from there, a lot of good things, but that we have nine school psychologists right now, mental health, and those issues as related to students are very important to us, and we're really working hard on pushing those forward. We also have a new security web filter, and so if you have an account at La Salle, it can help trigger if there's something unusual going on with your student, so it can help trigger that. And I think that that's great, that we're helping parents be able to do those things as well. And then, I went to the parent night at the high school, talking about vaping and talking about cyber safety, and, you know, my students, my sons graduated 10 and 12 years ago, and I can't believe the difference there is in that short a period of time of what students are being exposed to. And one of the things that I must say that I loved about, he gave us a lot of information, taught us a lot more than I could have ever expected to learn about these topics, but then he also talked about how do we handle these things? How do we handle? And he really talked about family dinners, and that you have to be able to sit down and have conversations with your kids and be able to open those things up. And so, I think it was a great night for our parents, and I appreciated the information.
I'm done, Dr. Barki.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, thank you to my fellow board members. There are some difficult times and challenges that we've faced, and I truly believe that through these difficult times, we'll come out better on the other side. And I appreciate hearing from our community and hearing about some of the issues that are going on in our district, because it's only through that kind of dialogue that we can get better. And I look forward to working with you all and Dr. Crop in doing the work that's necessary to make sure that we are the school that we want to be, and we are the school that the community demands us to be. So, I look forward to that. State of the district was spectacular. Thank you, Dr. Crop, and everyone who helped. It was fantastic. I think we've outgrown our venue, though, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I look forward to that next year. It'll be even that much better, and it's a, it's a very enjoyable event. Back-to-school night was fantastic. I love the, the, it's sort of like a buffet table, you know? You get a little taste of everything as far as the performances go, and there's a great performance coming up this week. We've got choir performance. Hopefully, you guys are going to get to go there. Let's see, La Salle Chamber, I attended as well, and Leisure World Expo, I was also there. So, next board meeting is October 9th, and I look forward to a few weeks of getting around, and I will see you all then. Anything else for the state of the district? Very good, then we are adjourned.